I hereby call the City of Buellton Special Meeting for City Council, October 29th, 2020, at 6:00 PM to order. If I could get Councilmember Sanchez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
You will, thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If I can get Linda to do roll call, please.
How about Claire?
Or Claire, thank you. How nice to have you here tonight.
Linda's on my end.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mercado.
Here.
Mayor Sierra.
Here. Thank you very much, Claire. We have public comment, and I do have one written public comment. If anybody is watching this special council meeting and wants to get in their public comment, now is the time. Where are they sending it to, Claire?
Council.
Okay, and this is your three minutes to talk about anything you want to talk about. This one is from Kathy Breeland. Good afternoon. I'm not sure how you're doing public comment as I haven't done that yet, but I just wanted to comment on the table crosswalks on the avenue. I'm sure you've had your share of complaints or comments, but we are front row witnesses to the daily launches out here, some leaving sparks as they land. They are new, and it's going to take some time getting used to, and I understand we want to calm traffic. But I think most people are not familiar with, one, the term table crosswalk, and, two, what the image on the sign for one means when you see it. It's pretty deceiving and just looks like a person crossing the street. It doesn't say bump or anything. I wondered if it's possible to change those signs for one that just says bump ahead or slow bump ahead. I've seen senior citizens launch, contractor trucks launch, and lose their tools and items out of their truck and have to stop traffic to pick them up, RVs towing cars that bounce around after they go over it. Today, a dirt bike used it for some trick riding as a jump, just to name a few. I think in time, they will work well, and I don't think we want to clutter the avenue with a lot of signs. But maybe if that one style can be changed out just to say bump ahead, it may help a little. Not sure if Caltrans would allow for that. Thanks for your consideration. We would hate to witness a fatal accident or cause injury to passerby if it could be a simple fix. Kathy, at the Chamber of Commerce. Okay, am I, everybody got that one?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other public comments. Did you have one, Claire? Any come in?
There have been none.
No.
Perfect. Then we will move on to the big event. We have a public hearing with a resolution and an ordinance. Resolution number 20-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, approving a final development plan, 19-FDP-01, and lot line adjustment, 19-LLA-01, for the proposed Creekside Village, a mixed-use development project located at 480 Avenue Flags, Assessor's Parcel, number 137-170-042 and 043, and Ordinance Number 20-07, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, approving a development agreement, 20-DA-01, for the Creekside Village Mixed Use Development Project located at 480 Avenue Flags, and authorizing execution of the agreement by the city manager. This is an introduction and first reading. I turn this over to Contract City Planner Irma Tucker. You're muted.
There you go. We'll try that again. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Last week, at its October 22 regular meeting, the council heard presentations from staff and the applicant regarding the proposed Creekside Village Mixed Use Project. The project came to the council upon recommendation from the Planning Commission, which had conducted a public hearing on September 17, and passed a resolution recommending approval to the City Council of the Land Use Permit Applications, Final Development Plan, and the Lot Line Adjustment. The City Council Public Hearing on the project was opened on October 22 and continued to the October 29 meeting tonight in order to give the community ample time to review and comment on the project. So last week, October 22, there were three comment letters received in support of the project, and these were read into the record as part of the public hearing. For tonight's hearing, several additional comment letters in support of the project were received prior to the meeting, and they will be read into the record. And I'm not aware of, I know there were four comment letters that came in prior to the start of the hearing, so I don't believe there have been any additional, but, no, okay. In addition, given that a number of the residents currently living on the property are Spanish-speaking, bilingual notices have been provided by the applicant to the tenants. There were several. Actually, there was a letter dated August 9 regarding the story polls that were to be erected in the middle of August. There was a letter dated October 19 regarding the development plans to be considered by City Council, which would have been the council's first meeting. And on October 22, just this past week, in advance of tonight's council meeting, a Spanish-language transcription of last week's council meeting was provided to all the tenants and posted in the public place on site. The translation included the project presentations, all the questions, and related discussion by City Council, and also provided an email address to which the tenants could submit comments for tonight's meeting. The applicant indicates that additional direct contact with most of the residents was also made directly with the, by the property manager to make sure that they received the notice and understood that they were also able to submit comments. And it is my understanding that no Spanish-language comments have been submitted for tonight's hearing. Just making sure, make sure that nothing else came in.
Nothing more.
Okay. So just as a reminder, tonight is not a new hearing. We are just picking up where we left off last week. The City Council will reopen the continued hearing and take additional public comments to be read into the record. The applicant, Brandon Mann, is here to address questions from last week and respond to any additional comments that the City Council may have. In addition, several members of the project team are here as well to answer questions, Michael Holliday and Wade Mosley from DMHA Architects, and Bethany Klug, Landscape Architect. We are not planning to repeat the project presentations that were given last week. However, the slides from last week are available in case the council desires to view certain aspects of the project. So please let me know, and we will share this information on the screen. At the end of tonight's meeting, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council consider taking action on the following items that were read and hold by Mayor Sierra. I will just repeat them. There, Resolution Number 2026, approving the final development plan and lot line adjustment, and Ordinance 2007, approving development agreement. So with that, I would like to hand the mic back to Mayor Sierra to continue the public hearing, and then consider additional remarks from the applicant and consider taking action on the project. Both the city manager and I are available for any questions that the council may have of staff as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, before I go to our four public comment letters, I will ask the council if they have any questions. I'll start with Vice Mayor Mercado. Any questions regarding this resolution ordinance, any of the material?
None at this time.
Okay. Councilman Sanchez, any questions?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay. Councilman King?
I don't have any questions. Well, I do, I do maybe have a couple of questions for the developers. Is that, are you going to open that up for them?
This is the time for questions, please.
Okay. Have you had, per our conversation we had in the last meeting, have you had any reconsideration of that parking?
Yeah, I'll speak. Do you want us to go through the actual full comments and questions right now, Holly, or just after the public comments get read in?
I can read that if you've got a quick answer for them. That would be great. If you don't, then...
Because I have a, we, long story, long answer short, we, we haven't been able to redesign the project since then, but I have provide, I have come up with putting, you know, my pencil down and really done an exhibit to show the parking and kind of walk you through what's available, but I figured that would be for more of a long form.
I'll save, I'll save that till you have it.
And I would defer to that as well, because I think that's going to be more of an issue.
Terrific. Was there any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Andrisik, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
All righty, thank you. Then I am going to read our four public comment letters, and we'll go back to a discussion and to hear from the developers and anybody else who wants to talk. First one is, Dear City of Buellton, I am sending this letter in strong support of the Creekside Village Development proposed at 480 Avenue of Flags. I am a 15-year resident of Santa Barbara and have managed multiple businesses in and around Buellton. My staff and I are lucky to have been regular patrons of Buellton shops and restaurants over the years. I am a strong supporter of responsible development in Buellton and Santa Barbara County that fits the spirit and aesthetic of our beautiful community while supporting our citizens and businesses by providing much-needed housing. I believe this project does exactly that. This project is an exciting improvement to the visual aesthetic of proposed address and will increase the value of the shops and homes nearby. I encourage you to support this project as responsible development. Give the now and future citizens of Buellton new quality residences to support the healthy growth of Buellton and its economy. Sincerely yours, Colin DeBorah. Then I have this one. Dear Buellton City Council, my name is India Amarina. I am a resident of Santa Barbara County and president of Pacific Grown Impact, a nonprofit dedicated to career development and life skills trainings for the workers in Santa Barbara agricultural industry. I am writing to offer my full support for the Creekside Village project. It will help address our demand for residential and commercial spaces in the center of Buellton and support our prospering agricultural communities throughout the area. Affordable housing is essential for the responsible growth of these emerging communities, and I am excited and eager to see the prospects of Buellton grow. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, India Amarina, Pacific Grown Impact. Dear City of Buellton, I am sending this letter in strong support of the Creekside Village Development proposed at 480 Avenue of Flags. I am a 15-year resident of Santa Barbara and have managed multiple businesses in and around Buellton. My staff and I are lucky to have been regular patrons of Buellton shops and restaurants over the years. I am a strong supporter of responsible development in Buellton and Santa Barbara County that fits the spirit and aesthetic of our beautiful community while supporting our citizens and businesses by providing much-needed housing. I believe this project does exactly that. This project is an exciting improvement to the visual aesthetic of proposed address and will increase the value of the shops and homes nearby. I encourage you to support this project as responsible development. Give the now and future citizens of Buellton new quality residences to support the healthy growth of Buellton and its economy. Sincerely yours, the Reverend Mary Moreno Richardson, retired Episcopal priest. And our last one is, Dear Buellton City Council, my name is, and I apologize in advance, Q. Zhang Li, and I am a 37-year resident in the City of Buellton. I am the owner of the Country Lane Motel and vacant property immediately next to the Creekside Village project. I am writing to you today to provide my support for the mixed-use development led by Brandon Mann and Walid Abayar. The Avenue of Flags needs new residential and commercial developments in order to support existing businesses and residents such as myself. The Creekside Village project will bring much-needed residential space and commercial opportunities to the center of our town. I am hopeful that there will be additional residential density and height variance on the proposed project site along the avenue and along the avenue. I urge the council to approve the Creekside Village project. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Q. Zhang Li. That's what I've got. Has any more come in since we started reading this?
Let me check one moment here, Madam Mayor, just to double check. I do not believe so. Nothing further.
All righty. Then I return this to council. I think before the council puts in their comments, this would be the time for Brandon and any of the interested parties to speak a little bit. Brandon?
Sure. I just wanted to mention that I believe when I saw the comments come in, I brought this up with Claire, and I believe Walid with Irma. I think one of those letters was a double up. I think that Lady Myra was just bandwagoning on Colin's letter in support, but just wanted to clarify. The, I think I had mentioned from the last meeting, you know, I grew up in Buellton. I've seen it grow and develop over the years. We're really excited to be able to invest in this community. I truly believe in the long-term growth. I think the specific plan has been implemented very well. I know the City of Buellton has spent many years and a lot of money on working on this plan, and, you know, for a project just like this to come along and, you know, take advantage of that specific plan area to redevelop the downtown. I think that Buellton as a whole is a fantastic city and has a lot to offer. I think it's growing very smartly and intelligently, and I think that the only thing that's really missing is development on the avenue in a core location to promote the downtown Main Street. And really, there's maybe five or six parcels that are available to do this, 480 Avenue Flags being one of them. I hope that this development catalyzes future growth on those parcels, and that on Build Out Avenue of Flags is, you know, one of the most sought-after main streets in Southern California. I think it has the opportunity to really draw people in and keep them here, and we're looking forward to pursuing this development and, you know, getting it built if, if it's so approved. So thank you, and we're available to answer any questions.
All righty. Dave, did you, is this a good time to go into your parking issue? Councilman King?
Yeah, I, I was taking some notes here. If everyone could refer to page 160 of the package. Give you a moment to get there. That is where it references the parking. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if you look at that chart, it says there, and I'm kind of taking a libertarian view on this, and even the meetings prior that we've had about this and the discussions we've had, the Planning Commission, their discussions they've had about this, this project realistically is very, very aggressive. I know, and Brandon and I have had discussions about, you know, in order for them to make any money on this, and I know they're, and let me digress just a moment. Brandon, I think this is a fantastic project. I know that you put a lot of work into this. You put a lot of time, resources into this. This is exactly, I think, what at least myself envisioned on doing kind of an Art Deco downtown corridor. I think this would be an absolutely beautiful building. But I'm still really, really concerned. During the Planning Commission meeting, it was discussed that there is sufficient parking on the street for this project. So now if we take a step back and we say, okay, yeah, that's great, but the taxpayers of this town have to pay for the maintenance of the streets, the curbs, the sidewalks, the drainage and all that. And now this project, basically, for a private entity, is going to be, is, well, let me put it this way, it's going to have to have the additional parking used on Avenue of Flags, which is paid for by the taxpayers. So in my opinion, that's, you know, that's taking public resources and providing that for a private development. So if we go to that chart on Table 3 here, it says commercial, 10,670 square feet, one per 300, parking required is 36. So parking provided in this project is five. That means there's 31 parking spaces that are going to be needed for that commercial use. Now, of course, we all know that's not going to be 24/7. People are going to be utilizing this commercial space, and they're going to always be occupied. But my, when I go down to the residential, it says 10 studios, and you say one per unit. Well, I know a lot of people, including my adult children, who have lived in studios, and they both have cars, because you have, you know, two adults in that, in that particular studio. So that realistically would be 20 cars. And then the 31 bedrooms, if you say there's two cars associated with that, that realistically is 60. And the 24 two-bedrooms, which may have adult children that are driving, is realistically 72 cars associated with that. And then your visitor parking is 13. So if you do all the math on that, the realistic number of cars associated with this project is around 204 in addition to the handicap units that are with this project. So if you take a look at that small piece of property, which is 1.67 acres, you're realistically or potentially going to have 200 cars associated with that project. And you are only going to put a fraction of the number of those cars for parking on this particular piece of property. I mean, I would like to see this go forward, but at some point in time, I would hate to say, you know, I told you so.
That's fair. Thank you for that, Dave. May I respond?
Of course.
So I understand that parking is a concern, and I just wanted to mention that, you know, we are following the code. So actually, Buellton does have a, you know, a stricter code than most. Usually, it's half a spot per studio, but I get where you're coming from, that there could potentially be more cars. However, we wanted to make sure that we parked 100% of the residential residents on site. So per code, we are meeting that. The only deficit really is in relation to the commercial, which we feel really would blend well with the Avenue of Flags specific plan. But I do kind of have some exhibits that don't add any new information, per se, but just kind of... but just kind of maybe highlight, you know, where we're coming from on our side. So if I could share this screen. So this is a matrix that I did to show parking, and I do have a picture above as well from the parking study. But this is the onsite parking as is that is required by the site per the code. So 108 spots we're providing and are required 137. So we have a delta of 29 spots. We were asked by the city to allow a pass-through on the back of our property, to Q's property, if I butcher that, I apologize as well, who's adjacent to us. And so, our real deficit is 24 parking spots, which primarily are the commercial. In most cities, whether it's LA, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, Santa Maria, I know that Buellton is not those cities, but there is traditionally a mixed-use parking reduction. So because these uses are exclusive, you know, there's probably no one going to be parked on those commercial spots after 5:00 or 6:00 PM, that there would only be 103 spots required, and we are still providing 108. So in that, you know, theoretical scenario, in any other city besides Buellton, we would actually be providing a 10 parking surplus per the code. But I know that's not the case. So within, so as it stands in Buellton right now, per the parking study, within one block of our site, there's 121 parking spots. Our deficit at 24 would mean that there is still 97 parking spots within one block of this site, and the majority are directly in front. If you include the median 2 construction, there's 137 surplus. And if you include the build-out of the specific plan with 355 proposed, there's going to be 331 extra parking spots absorbing our potential deficit. This picture right here is from the parking study, showing the project site, because everything that we've included is onsite parking. So everything on our garage or are open to the air parking. These 17 spots are on Avenue Flags, and these 40 spots are on Second Street. So just with the parking that is on Second Street and Avenue of Flags for the potential commercial uses or potential residential, to your point, Dave, if they do have extra vehicles or they have extra people in there, there is, you know, almost double our deficit within a stone's throw distance. And then, within one block, we make up an extra almost 60 spaces. Avenue Heights parking is about the same number of units as ours. It's 63 residential units, I believe, without any commercial, and to provide 100% of their residential. And I've driven by there multiple times. I don't have any pictures, but most of, if not, there's a lot of vacant spaces. So I believe Buellton does do a good job with their parking code to capture. And in and around our site, there is a large surplus of extra parking. And like I had mentioned before, there are not that many places on Avenue Flags that can be built out. And I think the specific plan does a really good job in addressing those and calculating the parking that will be required or the extra on-street for some of these commercial mixed-use uses. That being said, we also are providing about $300,000 as part of our DOR. And part of that money, or all of it, can be used to pay into a parking fund to offset some of those spaces. So, we feel pretty confident that with this information, the residents will be parked, and even if there is an overflow and for the commercial, that there is adequate surplus parking, you know, with an arms-length distance of our site to, you know, capture that deficit. But the site is difficult. As you mentioned, costs are high. It's been difficult to make this project pencil, and so, you know, we've done the best we can. I think there could potentially be a thought about providing more parking if we reconfigured the site somehow. But that might get into, you know, fourth stories and other things, which, you know, are not on the table at this point. So I wanted to make that clear, and if anybody has any questions on that. I don't know if that solves your question, Dave. I know you still have that concern, but I wanted to let you know that we've really tried to do our research to make sure that we're not going to be having too much overflow for the avenue.
Well, I can understand where you're coming from, Brandon, but, you know, what is, you know, even code or reality are often two different animals. And what you're showing here on the avenue is the 32 to the north of that, the 17 the south, the 14, the 18 on there. Yeah, that's correct. But as I pointed out, that those on-street parking spaces are paid for by the taxpayers of the city of Buellton. And those taxpayers, at some point in time, you will pay the same rate as they do. But now, you're paying same tax property rate and the property taxes or the city taxes or whatever the case is, the people that live in this town are basically, as I addressed, paying for the maintenance of those parking spaces and the roadway within there. And now, they, as taxpayers, are not able to utilize those parking spaces even though they paid for them out of their taxes. Now, is there any, and I'm certain and sure this would cost you a pile of money. I don't know if you could ever pencil it out and recoup that money, but you do have a spot there that's an open spot for parking, correct? In the back, if I recall the diagrams that I saw this. The only solution that I can think in my mind that you're talking about, you're talking about 40 on Second Street. Some of those may spill into the parking that is back for Crawford Family Wines and the plating shop right there is owned by the Briartons. That's their parking spaces back in there now. Some of those may spill back in there.
Yeah.
I could see, now, let me get to my point, and I'm sorry I'm a little slow about this. The only thing, it would cost you a pile of money, but if you double-decked your parking spots.
And I hear you on that. And I understand you're saying that the taxpayers will be paying for those spots, but that is specifically what the specific plan has tried to do, is allow parking and density and height to be done for a development opportunity reserve. And the city is also going to be redeveloping the medians for parking. It's going to be a very parking-heavy site, but we are putting $300,000 into a pot for the city's discretion. And if all of that money needs to be used, you know, for parking, that could be us, you know, not using the taxpayer dollars, but directly funding the deficit of those parking spots on the medians.
And I get where you're coming from on that, and I understand that. But here's another point. I don't think that the people in this town thought it would be a good idea to spend $1.5 million on Median 2 to have local residents jam into those parking spaces. And really, realistically, nobody cares about the $300,000 that got sent to the city of Buellton when you have to drive around for 10 minutes looking for a parking space.
Well, I hear you on that, and, you know, all we can do is kind of put our best foot forward. We do have the DOR fund. We are capturing 100% of the residential parking onsite. So the only people driving around looking for a spot would be those going to the retail experience. And that is the specific intent of redeveloping the medians, is for the kind of transit-oriented retail shopping experience on Avenue of Flags. And as of right now, according to the parking study, out of these 121 spaces, there's only, you know, 19 or 20% of them on peak hours are even used. So maybe only 15 or 20 of those spaces during weekdays or weekends are being occupied at this time. So if this project is built, we would only occupy maybe, you know, with our entitled, full deficit, 30% of the available parking spaces within one block of this project, with no issue to any current resident or commercial user, in our opinion.
Any other comments, Councilman King, before I move on?
Let me unmute myself. No, ma'am. I think that is just my biggest concern with this, in that going forward, you know, we might have to do some more numbers and see what project in the future and how that'll affect the parking situation on the avenue.
You know, Dave, part of the reason that the parking has been cut back is because they're putting that pass-through to eventually connect to Highway 246. And as the avenue gets developed, I believe that's critical to traffic circulation. So part of this, the city with its concern to have a pass-through, to have another exit instead of going out onto the avenue, that we've actually cut back on some of the parking that could have been put into this project. So that was something the city requested. Anyway. Vice Mayor Mercado, any comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Sanchez?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and comments. One question, I don't know whether it's something that we can do with the, because my big concern, I live on a street that has overflow parking on where I pull out. And what the concern I have is, there's all these people that have places there and they live there. If one of them buys a hobby car or something, you know, everybody wants to have a Corvette, you know, they, you know, they drive on the weekends or whatever. Anybody in there with two cars is going to have to find a place to park that car. So my concern there is having the guy with a car that just moves it every couple of days or something, you know, because I don't know what the law is. It'll become an issue when there's one there that's, you know, parked all the time. And I wondered if maybe we could clean it up with just maybe some timed parking so that it's only mobile, you know, so people can't just start parking their junkers. I know a lot of, a lot of people have, a neighbor that has a couple of old junk cars and parks them in the street. And I'm just afraid with all those places, somebody is going to, you know, they're going to have two people apiece, and then if one of them has an extra car, it's going to become something that just moved around and looked like a junkyard around there. And I was wondering, maybe we could change the, like I said, make an ordinance or if there's some kind of rule we could apply to the tenants that they can't own extra cars or something. I don't know if that's legal or whether it's just a concern. That was my comment on the parking.
Okay.
My other comment was, with the pass-through is the reason there isn't any more parking in the back. I don't know if we could lessen the pass-through and put a couple of spots in the back there without, you know, taking too much space. Just a comment on that.
We looked at, to address that pass-through. We looked at multiple ways to do it. We feel that it's probably best to have it in in the onset. It does cost about, you know, I think, 5 to 7 spaces, but we averaged it at about 5. But I think it's best to put it in now, probably, instead of putting in parking and then taking out later. Also, we looked at the best way to configure the site. I know one of Dave's earlier comments was about, you know, back in the day, was about full-size parking, and so we wanted to make sure we kept them. I think we have maybe only 9% compact or, maybe I'm butchering that number, but we do have a lot of full-size parking spots on this site. So potentially, we could look to do more compact, but I believe everybody's going to want to have, you know, the potential of having their full-size vehicle.
And the tenants, is there a way to restrict their car ownerships or?
Yeah, I can look into that for CCNRs, but I believe if the city also wanted to put timed parking on the streets that they own on Second Street or Avenue Flags, you know, that could also solve that problem.
Well, if it's in the CCNRs, it could be enforceable as well. I don't know. I just, that way, you'd be controlling it in-house instead of us changing the rules on the street. But I can, I can see some, you know, junk cars there all the time, you know, taking up spaces.
Yeah. I hear you. We can look into that. And also, one comment as well that I forgot to mention is, you know, this is the first project looking to utilize the DOR and, you know, talk about parking and density. As the avenue develops out, more projects will be able to supply additional parking or, you know, as we fill up the bucket of available parking, that's, you know, like Dave had mentioned, you know, the city can look at each project kind of on its own and as part of the whole and maybe, you know, tweak some things around as it gets built out. But for right now, if we just built this project tomorrow, there is, you know, an extreme surplus of parking in and around the site. Maybe when there's six projects built on Avenue of Flags that build out, you know, as you get closer to that number, you might have to relook at honing in on that focus.
Alright. Thank you.
You're good, Councilman Sanchez?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Andrisik, concerns, comments?
My comments are the same that I touched on at our last meeting. The folks that I'm talking to are concerned about the story polls. The story polls are good for everyone that can't envision the site, the height, the size. And I think since our last meeting, I've really been going back and forth to the story polls, and I'm guessing that the story polls are at the height that you're asking for the extension beyond our municipal code limits. Am I correct with that? Did you make the story polls at the 38, the 38 feet versus 35?
Yeah, the story polls are at the 38 feet. And actually, if I could address that comment, I do have, so I did this. So I know you didn't really get a chance to go through your comments at the last meeting. And I know the story polls, they are, they look very massive and bulky because they have almost zero articulation. It looks like if you just kind of paced it 38 feet across the entire rectangle of the site, that's what the site would look like. But in reality, you know, that will not be the case. The story polls are also put in 10 feet from where the project line typically is. So they're only showing the top of the roofs around the site. So like you said, it's hard to envision. But what I've done here is I've taken Michael's, you know, great renderings, and I've shown you, you know, right here on the blue line is 35 feet by right. So this is what I could come build or anybody could come build without asking for council approval or really just going through the traditional city administrative process to build something. The city of Buellton's code, you can build right to this blue line around the whole project really without much trouble. We're asking for 38 feet of working height proposed, which is this little difference right here. It almost would be, you can't even really tell. And most of that height is from the first story. We really want to have the retail be activated. If you have very short retail, it doesn't lend well to having a really good downtown experience. So that's where that extra, you know, three feet truly comes from. This red line is the 50 feet allowable. So the DORs and the specific plan allow a project to be built up to 50 feet. And that's kind of what a, maybe a four-story project would get to, is around that 45 to 50. But being a resident of Buellton, knowing that there are not that many very tall buildings in and around, I know there's, you know, Moriarty Site, Anderson's P-Soup, the New Vineyard Village Townhomes, the Marriott, the Hampton, but, you know, they're kind of spread around. So I understand the, you know, the visual impact. But I think one thing to consider is, number one, we're very minimal above the baseline. Number two, we're way below, about 12 feet below or a full story below, the allowable. And we decided to spread this building out and make it more massive to keep that third story. We could, you know, in theory, not saying we want to do that right now because we've come this far, but there is a theory that you could shrink this building, but it would have to go to a fourth story. It would be less massive, but it could be taller. So we, I wanted to respect kind of the, you know, the first project, not trying to push the bounds to the extent in every which way. But we are significantly under the allowable height and only very minorly above the allowed height that anybody can build in Buellton right now. I think another thing that's missed on the story polls, to your point, Ed, is if you look at this frontage right here, you'll notice that this is on, I believe, Second Street. Most of the building that you'll see on the, right on Second Street, is not three stories. It's actually two stories for about 60% of the building, and it's stepped back. So one thing the story polls don't show is that at the perimeter or at the property line, that most of the building that is three stories is stepped back. And I believe Irma touched on this a little bit in her presentation before. But really, only this area right here, I don't know if you can see my mouse, or this area right here are even three stories at the property line. Most of it is actually two stories. And then, let me go to, you know, this is even a better example. This would be Avenue of Flags. Only these three potential vertical towers would be three stories on the street frontage. The other ones are stepped back, and so you really only see this two-story. And even where this wine deck is, is completely a two-story building. So that's, it's kind of hard to envision, like you said, what a building will look like with the story polls. But it does a pretty poor job of really showing that it's not going to be a giant block. It will have a lot of articulation and flow to it, and most of the building will not be three stories right up in your face. It will actually be two stories with a little bit of three stories sprinkled in. It will actually be two stories with a little bit of three stories sprinkled in, and most of the massing is in the center or towards the back of the site. This is, you know, part of the backside as well. Again, we're significantly under what is allowable. And the council may find projects that come up that, you know, only made them work is to get to that height. And that is something that has been studied in the specific plan and approved by, you know, a majority of the, of this sitting council as well, is up to that 50 feet. But I know it's hard to kind of grasp at, at this stage. So I hope that kind of can help color in that question, if you have any comments on that.
The comments I would make is the relaying to the council, the discussions that private citizens, they do not feel comfortable. They are not here, they do not speak out, but they, they have commented consistently that they feel it's too much of a project for that, for that piece of earth. And, and it's a wonder, it, it, it looks great, but I, I just think that we've pushed it to all boundaries, east, west, north, south. And it's a gorgeous-looking building, Brandon, and I, I'm, I just would like to see it within the limits of the limits that our city has approved from day one. And it's, and we've stretched it, massaged it, and it's, I'm not, I'm not hearing from people that they're happy to see us change our limits, or our sets of standards for construction. And this, this is a, it's a huge project for the size of property that it has. And I, I don't know, I don't know any other way to say it, and, and it's not my desire or place to suggest that you downsize it to offer the amenities that we, we, we anticipate with new, new construction. You know, people are going to be on foot. It, and then the parking issue is brought up, I think that's going to, gonna always be a problem. We've, we've had properties that we've bought in homeowner associations that everyone takes a blind eye. Once, once it's built, they just say, well, we've got to get out there early in the morning and get our parking spot, or come, come late at night and get a parking spot, so we can, we can be assured we can go to work without trying to find our car or look for parking space in the normal day. And so I think it defeats the purpose of community planning, community acceptance. It's, but you don't, people are not massively opposed to it, but they are not feeling that it's, it's, it's like a little, little more of the same. We've been, you know, we're, we're being, we're being told this is what it's going to be. They've made their investments, the ones that are property owners in, in Beelton, and I think they, they, we owe them that follow-through or dedication to enforce what our, what our standards are, and not, not to be tweaking them and say, it's only three and a half feet more. I'm, I'm just relaying it to you, what I'm hearing from the people that live in Beelton.
I appreciate that. And, and I've had many conversations with people, you know, that are, you know, are concerned about change and, and the height, but the majority of the people I have talked to have been positive about the growth. Like I mentioned before, there really is only five or six parcels on Avenue Flags that can be developed. If you're gonna have a downtown, you need to do it right. If you're gonna have a downtown, you need to have the density and the height to support it, otherwise, it doesn't work. You know, we currently own this property, you know, have spent millions of dollars investing in, you know, to do this plan, and want to see it through, and will invest-
I know you have.
Yeah, a lot more in the future. Another thing, too, is it is an Art Deco design, and Art Deco tends to lend itself to taller buildings, just by its nature. And yes, the building is massive, but it, the only way to make it pencil is, is to do this. And unfortunately, this isn't Santa Barbara, and I wouldn't want to, but I, I don't want to charge $4,000 for a one-bedroom, you know, studio or apartment. So, you know, the, even if land prices are cheaper here and rents are cheaper, construction prices are inelastic. It costs the same for me to build a building in LA than it does Santa Barbara, than it does Beelton. And unfortunately, the, the rents and everything else, you know, they fall off very high. So it, it makes it very difficult. So we're, we're very straddling the line, but, you know, I grew up in Beelton my whole life, you know, almost 30 years there, and I think that even if people are a little bit abrasive, that they'll be proud of what, kind of what we've accomplished here at the end of the day. And again, we are within the rounds, or within the realm of what the city has approved for the last two years. And I believe maybe Cosmont can speak on that a little more with kind of the density and the DOR and the height. But, you know, if we're not, we're not stretching the bounds, we're within the bounds, I believe. But thank you.
Brandon, this is Michael Holliday for The Architects. I can also say that this three and a half feet that we're projecting up is actually putting more space in the residential units, so that those are better livable units. So we've really tried to work closely with the team to do what we thought was appropriate. And we were doing this project in Santa Barbara today, we have two more levels on top of this. So just a immediate, Santa Barbara's going to 60 feet, that's over Groundfler Mercury there. San Luis Obispo is going up to 75 feet.
I, I think the Beelton residents would not be impressed with that.
A new project like this on a small site, and you see the area.
I think we lost you there, Michael, but I think-
Okay. Anyway, yeah, I don't know if you can hear me. I just wanted to say that-
It's breaking up. Your, your microphone, something's, the audio is muffled. I don't, is it just my, my?
When you do a first, this is the first big significant project we entered, okay, I'm sorry.
All right. I think just to get color what Michael was saying, I think, you know, and again, I, I know we draw these parallels from other cities, and I know Beelton is not San Luis Obispo, and Beelton is not Santa Barbara, but I believe, you know, the intent of the downtown is, you know, commensurate with, with all these cities that are trying to do pro-growth. But Beelton actually has a way lower standard for what is kind of acceptable than almost any other city in, in the, in the two counties. So many cities are going way far above because they know that it's a tried and true method, that if you're going to be investing in building these buildings in a downtown area, you need the density, you need the height to have a sense of place and draw people in. If you don't, they just don't work. And, you know, there's a lot of projects that have been approved in the City of Beelton in the last five years that aren't being built. There's 518 Avenue Flags that isn't doing anything right now. There was a site across from the Hampton Inn that was approved. There is the one across from Anderson's P-Soup, even the one up on the north of Avenue Flags. No project approved has actually made a significant effort to go forward, and that is partly due to the fact that our economy is not in the best place right now, and it's really difficult to make these projects work. So even an extra three feet here and there really does help tip the scales to getting something done versus having nothing there. But that's, that's what I can say about that, and I don't know if Cosmont has any thoughts because they've been around longer than I have, you know, working with the council for many years to, you know, put these rules in place.
Does Cosmont want to talk?
I'd be happy to, and Joe Diegas is also on. This is, can't hear it. If you guys, yeah, thank you, if you guys can hear me. I think this project, if you will, dates back four years or so. I mean, it's been a while, in that part of our original evaluation of the City of Beelton was, started early on as sort of a market evaluation and an economic development strategy. Out of that came the idea that Avenue Flags was a priority for the city in terms of wanting it to become a more vibrant downtown. And that, if I may say, the uses on the avenue weren't sort of of the highest and best use. So the goal was, let's do something to create development or, and/or entice private investment. And so four some odd years ago, we had embarked on a specific plan process, and one of the tools, economic development tools within that was this concept of Development Opportunity Reserve. I would say that the city was very diligent in that process, staff, Irma was involved, a couple of council members currently on council today were involved, and then the community was involved. I mean, it was a pretty significant outreach that I recall, Joe recalls, where we went to the community. And I remember a debate about development and density and height and parking. The end of the day, the specific plan went through the laborious process to ultimately get approved, and it did. And the point of it was to lay the groundwork for projects to come to fruition. Those are projects that are thoughtful, within the four walls of the specific plan, and meant to be a bit of an enticement for private investment. Because at that point, there was virtually, there's very little private investment. And to date, there has been very little private investment. So here we are, fast forward to a project that's before you, in my estimation, that has had to take on not just black and white, because the idea of a Development Opportunity Reserve is there's a trade-off. And that trade-off is, hey, if we can push height and density and some parking requirements within, again, an envelope, if there's a trade-off, a community benefit, then it could be worth it. So that doesn't mean that there isn't discretion on your part, City Council. You have discretion, because this is your city, your project, your specific plan. We look at it, I look at it as a major investment on the part of the city to then hopefully achieve a return, a return on investment. Your investment in a specific plan, the time, the community, the input, the majority of folks who were there at all the workshops, and the Planning Commission meeting, and the City Council meeting, who approved the specific plan. And so today, I, I like to also look at things in the extreme. To me, if a project doesn't go forward, I think it's a much worse alternative. I think you have nothing. And I think that's a worse alternative, being very honest. Now, the project may not meet your prerogative in terms of some of the issues, it may not meet the community's issues, but if you look at it in totality, I think it's within the four walls of the specific plan. It attempted to take advantage of the Development Opportunity Reserve, which is what that trade-off was meant to be. There is a development agreement that has been negotiated at the staff level and vetted with the council subcommittee, that I believe could be characterized as win-win, meaning it's beneficial to the city to get $300,000, 50 grand starting in year two, every year, no matter what. And I think it's beneficial for the developer. The developer has a pro forma and has to meet a certain risk-adjusted return, and I think they've sort of pushed that envelope to a degree. They've brought the architecture that you all wanted, or that's in the specific plan. So I have the full perspective from years ago to today, and then how a project can get done and move forward and be catalytic to the Avenue of Flags in Beelton, Beelton, California, to me, I think is worth looking at the glass half-full instead of half-empty. Those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Joe, did you have anything to add, or?
That's a tough act to follow, I think, Ken.
That's true. Well, I guess I've got my comments, and then, and then we will go from there. First of all, we went through visioning, we went through Avenue of Flags, what our residents wanted to see there. Then we went into the specific plan for Avenue of Flags, and this is, every council member knows, Brandon, everybody in our community knows, that this is one of the premier locations on the avenue in our city. We want to turn Avenue of Flags into our downtown area where residents can come and walk around and grab a coffee, sit out on a patio and, and have some lunch, do some shopping. I just, I just think Brandon and his team, Cosmont, that they've bent over backwards to try to make this plan work for that piece of property. I think it's a beautiful plan. I understand the concern with the parking. I don't know if staff has looked at angled parking versus parallel parking. I do believe that just on Second Street itself, next to the lot, that there is plenty of parking. I agree, if, if you're gonna get people with two cars, it could become an issue, but there aren't that many spots on the avenue that are going to be as grand, as well-developed as, as this Creekside Village development. I just think, I just think that it is something, I'm, I'm surprised that it has hurt a lot of concerns. I've talked to residents who go back to the visioning, including Peggy Brierton, who think this is a great project. I have not had one person contact me with a concern about the proposed development. It is large, but it's a big piece of property. It's on one of the four corners of our downtown area, and, you know, the, the parking, the three and a half feet, I believe the DOR pretty much took care of that. So I, I just, I just appreciate the fact that it's taken four years, maybe not quite that long for Creekside, but that you've listened to everything, the planning department is, Planning Commission has had to say, and you've really tried to work hard to make this fit within our parameters. So I, you know, it, it is in the Avenue of Flags specific plan, and, and this is what we move forward to put on the avenue. So I, I am in favor of the project. Any last names?
Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am. Let me ask you, Brandon, what's your realistic timeline for this?
So the realistic timeline is, if the project is approved tonight, it's got to go to a second reading, I believe, sometime in November. We would start, you know, doing construction documents, you know, really getting down to the nitty-gritty. We've, as you've seen, done a lot of work. This, I've done probably eight entitlement projects in my career, and I think we've put, with Michael and Bethany and the whole team, you know, this is the most upfront effort I think I've ever done for an entitlement project. So we've done a lot of, you know, through the lighting, through the architecture design and, and everything, all the studies. So we're pretty far along. I'd like to start the construction document phase, really dialing in. At this point, everything is within a 30%, you know, margin of error until you really dial in the details. That process can take anywhere from 10 months to, you know, a year, year and a half, and then you're ready to break ground. So we're hoping that within the next, you know, two years at most, this project starts breaking ground and, and going. And it should only take, you know, a year to year and a half to build it, and then you're good. So I'm hoping within the next three to four years after this approval, that this project is up and running. That is, that is my intention. Now, I can't say if there's COVID-20 or anything else that happens, but that's what we're aiming for.
Good. Madam Mayor?
Yes. Vice Mayor Mercado?
Just to reiterate, amplify what you're saying, I, I think this is a great project. I think our committee made a lot of headway with Brandon, and he's made every effort to make this a great project. I think it's a great project, not just on that side, but a great project for the city. It gets things started, but the city, the residents have asked to see development on Avenue of Flags, make that our downtown. It's a project, yeah, it has a couple of areas, you know, parking might be an issue, but that's the thing, it might be an issue. It, it looks tight, but I, I think he's mitigated some of the issues, and, and we discussed that in our committee. But I just think this is the time and place to have a project like this- But I just think this is the time and place to have a project like this on the Avenue Flag and to get it started. So I would be in favor for it.
Okay. Any other comments from council members? Councilman Sanchez?
There's a question. It's all, it's all studios, and there's no accommodations for any children. And I wonder how we can, how you cannot have the population go up in there when it comes. Is there going to be rules against family, you know, young couples having kids or what, you know? It's going to, it'll expand, you know, within nine months, you'll probably have a population boom. Or I don't know how you can control that, is this a question?
Well, if I, if I may, John, it, it's 10 studios, I believe 31 bedrooms and 28, or four two-bedroom, so there is, there is a mix. And I believe a planning commissioner asked about, you know, family amenities. Part of the reason for doing this project was I feel there is ample kind of family product in the Sanas Valley in Bealton. I think, you know, the townhomes that were just built, all along Bealton is kind of the single-family homes. Really, there's not a place for young adults to try to either start a small family or, you know, young entrepreneurs or, you know, workforce housing. So that, that was our goal. We do have a significant amount of open space on the project. So right now, the way it's designed currently with the podium deck, all of that is kind of open space. There's, we put a bocce ball court in there, you know, just to show the size. It might change to something else, but there is very large open space for people to hang around. It won't just be all concrete, it'll be planted and, and kind of hardscaped. And then also, right in front of us is Median IV, and right behind us is, you know, the creek area and, and some trails. So I think there is, you know, a lot of great parks in Bealton. There's Riverview Park, there's the Medians that are currently green right now that people can, you know, hang out and play on. But, you know, I didn't envision this project as, you know, a full family-oriented project. However, I do believe there's ample open space in and around for families and a big enough area that it can, you know, you know, be good for families. It's not a very small, tight-knit apartment building like you'd find in LA or something.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Andrisik, any final comments, questions?
You know, Madam Mayor and, and council, I think that kudos to Brandon for having the, the insistence to have closed auto storage. You know, that many communities, they throw up buildings for, for people to live in, and then they're left to fend for their parking. We touched on that a little bit today. So I, I really want to try to give this a chance to go, but it's either a yes or a no. You've, you've done, I think you've had an answer for every question or every concern that we've had through the whole process, and you're, you're to be commended for being, being well-prepared. And I, I think the project has a stronger chance of succeeding than failing, but we've been, you know, communities wind up making these large commitments. Once your project is approved, and if it doesn't come to fruition, how do we tell other people that they can't stretch the, the specific plan, can't, can't modify, tweak here and tweak there? And, and I think that's, that may be part of the, the down, the downsized in having this, but it is truly a leap of faith, and you've, you have a bigger commitment to this city, I think, than anybody on this call. And so I, I realize the, the breadth of your, your commitment, and I really want you to succeed, and I'm just telling you that, you know, it's, you don't want to say, I'm not a nice "told you so" type of person, but there, there are, seem like there are a lot of things, a lot of things going to happen with this project, and I'm hoping that you're strong enough to bring it to fruition. I, I agree with Holly. I, I would like to see the project come through, but we've, I think every one of us have been in communities where projects have faltered, and they're just sitting, you know, abandoned. And that's a blight, that's creating a blight rather than a, a commitment to, to come to perform. So I guess that's, that's a concern that I've had every time I look at the project and, and where it is and what kind of hurdles you've got to get over. And I'm, I'm, I don't know why we set limits if we're going to tweak them. So I guess that's a, that's a fate, maybe, maybe staff has a, has an answer for, you know, everyone does it, so let's just keep doing it.
I think our city manager does.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I've been doing my best to just be quiet here during this hearing, but the question came up, and I, I think I can respond to this, and if, if I'm inadequately responding to it, responding to it, I'm sure that Irma and Andrea can jump in. I think it's important to note that within the specific plan, there are limits that are established. And what's really important to note about those limits is that the 35-foot limit that we're talking about here is not a limit on the specific plan, it's a limit of the municipal code. The specific plan, as Brandon indicated, actually allows heights to exceed that, up to a maximum height of 50 feet. So what's being asked for here is essentially an allowance to move closer to what the maximum height limit is as opposed to a deviation from the municipal code. Think of it, rather than thinking of it as the DOR process as a mechanism by which a developer can get more than what is normally allowed, I think the more appropriate way of looking at this is that the city has established a maximum amount of density, intensity, height that can be approved, but that the city council is not going to allow anyone to reach that maximum without having some sort of trade-off. And that's where the DOR comes in. It's a trade-off to, to, to reach that higher level of intensity. As for the question as to how the city turns around and limits another developer as they come through, it's important also to recognize that within the specific plan, there are finite limits to how much additional density and intensity can be approved. There are a, a finite limit to the number of housing units, a finite limit to the, I believe, the, the overall density within the specific plan. And so anything that's given to a particular project, for instance, this project, would not be available to be given to another project coming through. So we, the city council could not, without amending the specific plan, which would take, which would be another rather laborious legislative process, exceed the limits that are already established within the plan. So there are, there are, there are limits that are established. The city council cannot go beyond them without undertaking another very long and tedious process. What, what you're looking at here through the DOR process is just the mechanism by which you have some additional incentives, some additional density and intensity that's set aside in reserve, that the city council can dole out as it deems appropriate. And that's what's being asked for here. As the first project to come through, Mr. Mann is asking for the, the city council to dole out a small portion of that intensity, that, that additional height, it's not even the additional height, it's actually the additional density and a reduction in parking for that to happen. It is limited, and as the city council progresses down, as more projects come through, the city council is not required to allow additional or other projects to reach that limit just because they've allowed this one to. I'll leave it to our planning department to fill it in anymore, or our city attorney to pipe in if I've stepped out of line here. But that's, that's my, my, my view of the DOR process and where we're at with that.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate the, the extra comments.
And let me just add that, and I'm, I don't think Scott stepped out of line at all. I think he, he gave a great explanation. With respect to the height issue, and, and only to the height issue and the massing of the building issue, in, in setting up the specific plan, in essence, what the, the city said, everyone involved in the process said was, we know what the rule is throughout Bealton, but in this area, we want to change the rule and give a little bit more. And, and as a project goes through the DOR process, it lets the Planning Commission and the city council decide if it's a project worth working with, which is what all of you are talking with, with Brandon and his team about now. Is this a project worth allowing a little bit of extra density? Is it a project worth reducing the parking requirement a bit because we believe that it will be catalyst that Mr. Hira talked about and spur on further development? Or do we think that what it's asking for is a bit too much, given what we think it will do not only for this site, but for the avenue in general? It's not a decision for me to make, but I will say that it's a very common land use tool, and, and legally, you're, you're right in line. We're not looking at any variances tonight, we're not looking to change from the code. You've adopted procedures that let you do this if you want to. So as, as Scott said, I've stayed back, this is a policy decision, I haven't seen much in the way of legal so far, so I'm going to step back again and, and let you all keep making the decision that is yours to make.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Ed, were there any other comments, or should we move on to Councilman King?
Move on, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman King, any final comments?
I, I think I've said my biggest concerns on this. I mean, that's, I just hope that we don't do a grave disservice to the people that live here. I, I'm not so concerned about the height. I know that there has been an issue with that, such as the Juliet Walk project that we put through, we pushed that through, and then that had a big backlash after they...
Dave, Dave, we did not. We did not do that.
Well, if...
That's why we, one of the reasons why we ran for city council.
Yes, prior, prior members did that. So I, I, I'm not so much concerned about that because that, that particular project was like a big block right in your face. This one has a lot of character to it. It's just, my, my motivating factor is that we're going to take up all the parking spaces, and that's, that's just an issue for me. That's just, anywhere that I've been where I have to drive around and around and around and around, wait for somebody to pull out, that's, that's coming from my personal perspective.
Okay, okay. If everybody's had their fill of questions, comments, suggestions, opinions, I would like to make a motion...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I just add? We have two different items in front of you. So the first motion should be on Resolution Number 20-26, and whatever motion you wish to make is yours.
Thank you very much. I move to approve Resolution Number 20-26, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bealton, California approving a final development plan 19-FDP-01, and lot line adjustment 19-LLA-01 for the proposed Creekside Village mixed-use development project located at 480 Avenue of Flags. This is assessor's parcel number 137-170-042 and -043. So that'll be my motion.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Claire, would you do a roll call on Resolution 2026?
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mercado?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember... Councilmember Andrisik?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ordinance Number 20-07. I move an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bealton, California approving the development agreement 20-D8-01 for the Creekside Village mixed-use development project located at 480 Avenue of Flags and authorizing execution of the agreement by the city manager. This is an introduction in first reading.
And we would like to waive further reading of the ordinance if we...
And I would like to waive further reading of the ordinance.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Claire?
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mercado?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisik?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Brandon, I, I congratulate you, and I really hope to see this beautiful project set up in the next three or four years.
Thank you, honorable mayor and members of city council. We're really excited to be moving forward, so we'll get started on the next step. You know, got to wait maybe a week for the election, but other than that, make sure the world's still around in two weeks, and we'll, we'll get started.
Better get it started before the world ends.
Yeah. Hey, Brandon, I got one thing to say to you. Get her done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, everybody.
And the rest of the crew.
Do we have a closed session meeting tonight or, or not?
Yes.
Yes, we, yes, we do, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I didn't get, I didn't see the email or the column on that. Then I will turn this over to our city attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, just so that the council knows, this, the side development will come back at your first meeting in November. As you all know, any ordinance, the second meeting and adoption of an ordinance has to be at a regular meeting, so that will come to you first meeting in November. Now we will adjourn to closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator regarding the property located at 264 La Lotta Drive. The remaining information about that property is available on the printed agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight.
Scott, is it?
Thank you.
I, I have emailed you the info.